Call a meeting to order of the Natrona County Commission. We'll have roll call, please. Michelle.
Commissioner Bortolio?
Here.
Commissioner Jack?
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Jerry here?
Here. Now, we want to get the Board of Trustees called in.
Mike as well.
Serena Crowe?
Here.
Matt Graham?
Here.
Bill Knight?
Here.
Carol Brown?
Excused.
Okay. We are all here to hear a presentation about the consideration of Resolution 202036 approving the proposed sale of Natrona County-owned hospital assets to Banner Health and authorizing the Chair to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the transaction. Eric, our county attorney, you're going to give us a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees. I think the way we'll proceed with this is I'm here with Jerry Bell, who's counsel for the trustees and county commissioners as well, and he and I will give essentially a staff report on the transaction that will encompass the resolutions that the Board of Trustees and the Board of County Commissioners will each consider today. I think just procedurally, we'll give the presentation. We'll both stand for any questions from either the Board of Trustees or the Board of County Commissioners. At that point, I think sequentially, we'll turn to the Board of Trustees to consider action, assuming that it's in the affirmative, then we'll move on to the Board of County Commissioners. So if that is acceptable, we'll start with our presentation.
That's great. Go ahead.
So before we get into the specifics of the transaction, I wanted to give just a brief 30-second overview of the relationship between Natrona County to the Wyoming Medical Center. And as we've discussed previously in our public listening sessions and otherwise, Wyoming Medical Center, as a nonprofit entity, started to run the county memorial hospital in 1986 under an operating lease agreement with the county commissioners. And the Board of Trustees has filled the role of essentially a gatekeeper to receive reports on a semi-annual basis from Wyoming Medical Center. And in that initial operating agreement, which is still in effect today, WMC handles all of the day-to-day operations of the hospital. In exchange for essentially rent for the county assets, WMC has committed to provide involuntary commitment care, indigent care, and prisoner care in excess of $120,000, which the county pays on an annual basis. And so that's the current situation. I can tell you that over a year ago, we became aware at the county that WMC was considering seeking a strategic affiliation. And early this year, in January, there was a non-binding letter of intent that was signed between WMC and Banner. And so what I want to, first of all, stress is that since that time, and really into last year, I was going to say I've spent dozens, but that would be understating it. I think collectively, we've spent hundreds of hours working on the transaction that Mr. Bell will present in detail to you. So as you know, I've had numerous conversations with members of the Board of Trustees individually, county commissioners, and I believe that we have looked at this transaction from every possible angle. All right, I remembered how to use this. So first of all, I just want to set the stage for Mr. Bell's presentation. When we began working in earnest earlier this year, there were certain fundamental objectives that, from the Board of Trustees' perspective and the county's perspective, were critical to any potential transaction. There had to be a determination that Natrona County citizens would benefit from the overall transaction, had to make a decision that Banner is the correct partner for this community, and that the assets, if sold, were going to be sold for a fair market value to ensure that the citizens were getting full value for their assets. It was very important during this process that we have a permanent commitment on certain aspects of the hospital, so that it remain an acute care hospital, and Mr. Bell will go into more detail on that. It was also critical that any transaction contemplated would extinguish the outstanding debt of the county, which is approximately $50 million, that there would be commitments going forward on prisoner and involuntary commitment care. And then lastly, but most importantly, that the transaction overall complied with Wyoming law. So at this point, I'll turn the podium over to Mr. Bell, and he'll walk us through how we believe we've achieved those goals.
So the first time I met you all, you were very clear and explicit to me that if you did not achieve, if we did not achieve your objectives, that we were not going to do this deal. You were very clear about that. So you all know this deal, so let me just walk through quickly the summary of the transaction. So the Board of Trustees and WMC will terminate the 1986 operating lease. Then the county and the Board of Trustees convey the assets, which you own, and receive in exchange for that $157 million. Banner becomes a corporate member of Wyoming Medical Center. We have a total purchase price of $200 million, and we're going to show how that money flows in just a second. Banner makes numerous commitments, which we'll talk about more in a minute. The county debt is paid off, which was a big issue for you all, and was important from the very beginning. And then the county will convey $40 million to the WMC Foundation, which we'll also talk about. The WMC Foundation receives other proceeds. The transaction, if you approve it, will go forward and will close October the 1st. So that's just a, now, just a quick, just so everybody has a quick feel for the flow of the dollars, just starting on the right. So the total purchase price is $200 million. And to kind of make the point about, that's $200 million of non-Wyoming money that's coming into Wyoming. Just want to emphasize that. Of that 200 million, the county's receiving 157 million. And we're going to get to how that number was derived in just a minute. Out of that, you're going to convey $40 million to, as we've talked about, the Wyoming Medical Center Foundation. Moving over, then Banner will pay approximately $41 or $42 million, whatever it turns out to be, to the Wyoming Medical Center Foundation. The Wyoming Medical Center Foundation is going to end up being probably one of the largest foundations, I think I've heard, second-largest in the state of Wyoming. So it's going to be a very well-capitalized foundation. Wyoming Medical Center, as we talked about earlier, is going to take responsibility for the county debt. That's been an important issue for us from day one. Then there's a cash and investments technically go to Wyoming Medical Center Foundation. They will end up with a corpus of about $244 million. So that's basically kind of a quick overview of how the money will flow. So there are three key agreements for us, the Board of Trustees and the county. And we're going to go through these, and with each one, I think we achieve at least one or more of the objectives that you all set for us when we started this. So there's an asset purchase agreement with Banner. That is the agreement, we sell our assets to Banner. The second is, there's a post-closing operations agreement with Banner, which is basically Banner's commitments to us post-closing. And then there's a post-closing agreement between the county and the WMC Foundation that will really, it sets contractually the relationship the county will have with the foundation in the future, which I think is a really strong part of the transaction. So the asset purchase agreement, as we've talked about, so we, the county and the Board of Trustees, convey the real estate, buildings, equipment to WMC/Banner. In exchange for that, they pay us $157 million. The lease terminates, as we talked about. The $157 million, the way that price was derived was you all retained one of the best healthcare valuation firms in the country, VMG Health, and they're the ones who set the price. They're the ones, we hired them, said, "Tell us what the fair market value is of our assets." They came back, did a very comprehensive, thorough study. They said it's $157 million. So the price was $157 million. We were set in stone on that. And then last is the county debt is assumed at closing. Again, that was a fundamental objective that you all set from the very beginning. So with regard to the post-closing agreement with Banner, one of your other objectives that you were very clear about was that you had to be assured that whatever deal we did that absolutely preserved for all time, that there was going to be a viable acute care hospital in Casper. And if we could not assure you of that, then you told us you weren't going to approve the transaction. So Banner did step to the plate, and as part of this transaction, made a permanent commitment to us and to the foundation that they would own and operate a licensed and accredited acute care hospital, offering a 24/7 emergency room, Medicare/Medicaid eligible, Level 2 trauma, and maternal and OB. We thought, you know, that was a very strong commitment, and I can tell you, based on a lot of other transactions I've worked on, that the buyers often won't do that, because, you know, who knows what the future is. But Banner did step up, to their credit, and agreed with us that that was a fundamental component of the deal. Another one of your objectives was the county's got certain statutory obligations regarding prisoner care and involuntary, you know, commitment care for those who are involuntarily committed. And we told the parties that that was also a fundamental objective. And they agreed, Banner did agree to assume, more or less, for a 10-year period, absolute 100%, after that, the average. So we feel like that this is a substantial commitment on prisoner care and voluntary committed care. And the fairness letter that we get, which we'll talk about more in a minute, that was one of the highlights, that they said was, they found that to be one of the strong aspects of the deal for the county and the Board of Trustees. So the last key agreement is our agreement, the county's agreement, with the WMC Foundation. And I'm really, personally, I'm really pleased about the way this worked out, because I think that, I think the relationship between the county and the foundation going forward is really important, and I think that the way that it's structured is a kind of a good-for-all relationship. So the first aspect of it is, as we've talked about, the county's going to convey $40 million to the WMC Foundation at close. In their governing documents and in our agreement, that money can only be used to support healthcare services in Natrona County. In fact, under their governing documents, that's their mission. And then second, if they ever desire to spend any part of that 40 million, they have to come back to get the county's consent. So that's a good protection for the county. Ongoing, I think we've got a good structure of a relationship. They'll have a nine-person board, the county will have two appointees to the board. You'll have appointments on, or your appointees will be on two of their key committees. There's a contractual obligation on annual reports that are very detailed and comprehensive, so you'll always know what the foundation's doing and how they're spending their money and what their financial condition is and so forth. I think that's important. You all thought that was important, to have that kind of monitoring ability. And then we provided for regular meetings, so that there's always hopefully going to be a good dialogue between the county and the foundation. In addition to the commitments that Banner's made to the county and to the Board of Trustees, they've made a whole separate set of major commitments to the WMC Foundation, such as providing indigent care. There's a 10-year capital commitment that's basically a $100 million commitment. They've maintained, they've agreed to maintain key services and programs. They've agreed to have a local advisory board formed, you know, so they can get local community input. So that's a very good agreement for the community as a whole. This is, I think, from, I guess, as your lawyer, this slide's probably the one that I think, from my point of view, the most important. And from day one, what I'm thinking about is being able to put a slide like this up. From my point of view, you all have done everything that a board should do. I mean, the way you've handled the transaction from the very beginning has been really kind of a textbook way to approach a transaction. You're very clear about what your objectives were. Your objectives were appropriate and reasonable, and really, in the spirit of what's in the best interest of the public. But let me just go down the list. So number one, we talked about this earlier. We have a fair market valuation on the assets. You know, clearly, from day one, we're not selling our assets unless we're going to get fair market value for it. You have a lock-solid third-party valuation from one of the best valuation firms in the country on that. In addition to that, we went at your direction and went to one of the top healthcare financial advisory firms in the country, Kane Brothers, that had no interest in the transaction, didn't know anything about the transaction. And basically, we asked them to review the terms of the transaction and to, if they agreed, and if they believed it, to give us what's called a fairness opinion on the transaction. And we now have that. They've given us now, they've delivered a fairness opinion. And what their opinion is, is that the transaction as a whole is fair, looking at its entirety, including the WMC Foundation, that it's a fair transaction for the community as a whole. And with regard specifically to the county, that it's a fair transaction for the county and for the Board of Trustees. And that if you basically look at all the key financial features of the transaction, that it's fair. That is a very powerful kind of backup documentation. And not everybody does that, but you all did do that. And I think it really adds to, you know, from a fiduciary duty perspective, thinking of it that way, I mean, it's clearly a wise exercise of your duties. We want to make sure that the transaction complied with Wyoming law, and we're comfortable about that. We've got an opinion that says it is, from a very good Wyoming firm and from the county attorney. We have, from our firm, that's worked on many of these healthcare transactions, we feel like that the agreements are industry-standard and reasonable. Kane Brothers said the same thing in their fairness opinion, that they felt that the terms of the transaction were comparable to other nonprofit-to非profit transactions. So we feel really good that, you know, from a reasonableness point of view, that where we ended up on the transaction, that it's fair and adequately protects the committee, the commissioners and the Board of Trustees. Due diligence on Banner, one of the things that we asked Kane Brothers to do was to look at the financial condition of Banner and to give us an opinion or evaluation of their financial condition and their ability to satisfy the post-closing commitments that they're making, which are substantial, as you know. And Kane Brothers came back with a very strong, I won't say endorsement, but very strong analysis of Banner and their financial strength. And so we have that validation, you know, from an independent third party about the strength of Banner. And just from my own personal perspective, I do know something about Banner, and they are very good. You know, they're really one of the best health systems in the country, very well-regarded, not only because of their financial strength, but also because of their innovation and their reputation. And so they're a very, very solid company. You really could not have a better nonprofit partner for the community than Banner. And you all, and I do want to mention this too, you all did your own personal due diligence on Banner. You all interviewed their, you know, kind of their key senior people. You all exerted the time and effort to find out more about them. I think you all got comfortable, from what I understand, about them and their commitment to make this a really great hospital. So I think that was important, that you all did that. So, and then finally, we have the community forums that were done, so that you got public input. So from my point of view, the process that you all went through, the county and the Board of Trustees went through, and we know the process that Wyoming Medical Center went through. And that was an issue, I think, from the very beginning, was you needed to be comfortable that Wyoming Medical Center's process was good. And so we did have discussion, I know that they presented to the county what their process was done, and they followed that up with something in writing that described it. So I think we feel comfortable about the process that Wyoming Medical Center went through. The process that you all went through, from my point of view, could not have been more thorough, more careful, more diligent. It could not have been a better process. It was done carefully from the get-go, and you touched all the bases, as far as I'm concerned. So I know that there was, I know there's been mention about delay, you know. I don't really see it here, because I've been in deals where, yeah, maybe a delay would be the appropriate thing, but I don't see the delay here, because I don't know what else you could do. So I guess I would just, in conclusion, we know the WMC Board last night approved the transaction, and they've recommended approval of the substitution of Banner as the corporate member of Wyoming Medical Center. As we've said, I personally, I believe that all the original objectives that you all set have been accomplished. I think, personally, I think it's good for the community. I know it's a fair and beneficial transaction for the county. I know it's structured that way. I don't have any doubt about that. I think, you know, there's been a question about, is it a gamble? I think what's going on around the country, I know this personally, because this is what I do and do it in different parts of the country, what's happening here is the same thing that's happening everywhere. And it may be unfortunate, but, you know, but the standalone, local, community hospital is just in danger. And what's happening is, is that you've got, and really, what's kind of fortuitous here is that Wyoming Medical Center is really a great hospital, and it's, and it has been since the get-go. It's had great leadership, and so they're in the position now that, you know, that they're very attractive to somebody like Banner. But the problem is, you know, just from a purchasing power, what, you know, what so many of the independent community hospitals are doing is, they feel like they cannot survive unless they're part of a bigger system. And I think that's really what's, I really believe that's what the case is here. And I think the gamble would be not to do the transaction, because the gamble would be that 10 years from now, that Wyoming Medical Center's going to be the same or better than it is now, and I think that would be the gamble, personally. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Jerry. And so, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, we would stand for any questions that the Commission or the Board of Trustees would have regarding the transaction.
Okay. Is there any questions for anybody? We've gone through a lot of this several times.
Yes. Commissioner Bortolio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one slide regarding the amount that the foundation's going to have in it, I don't recall it being that high a number. I thought it was 220 and not 244.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bortolio, so I'm going to take a stab at this, and then I'll let Jerry correct me if I'm wrong. So I think that's an approximate number.
Okay.
Since the lion's share, $162.7 million, is in cash and investments, it's subject to fluctuations in the market. And so I think where that number ends up exactly at closing is, in large part, going to be determined on the status of the market. Is that fair? Yeah?
Then a question for Jerry, because I think that there's some sense that we're rushing this. From your perspective, is this taking quite a while relative to the other, or is this about an average pace of a sale?
I think it's taken a little bit longer, actually. I think the first time I met with you all was like well over a year ago. And I would say that most transactions would have been done by now. I think this is, I don't mean it's, you know, there's been a problem, I just think it's just been, it's been a deliberate, slow process. But I certainly don't think that it's been rushed. I think it's the opposite of being rushed. I think it's been done in a really deliberate way. And I don't know what else, I don't know what else anybody could do. I mean, I don't know what other information out there there is to go get, or other people to talk to, or other people to look at the deal. I think we all know, it's a fair, good deal, really, for everybody. It's one of those kinds of deals. It's been, there were really good financial advisors on all the parties, good legal counsel on all the parties. The parties are all good, solid organizations or entities, and I think everybody came together, and the end result was a very carefully crafted, fair transaction for everybody. and the end result is, was a very carefully crafted, fair transaction for everybody.
Thank you.
Other question? Commissioner Kaufman.
Yeah, Jerry, just stay. So some of the comments that I've received from some residences, they feel like our assets are undervalued. So I know that you've done a really good job of saying comprehensive, the team was good, like we had guidance every step of the way. Can you, can you speak at all the VMG, or do, do most people have two asset evaluations? I would, I would think not, but I just, I want to make sure, because if I had something that kept coming to me, it was, how do you know that that's the fair market value of those assets?
I'm 1,000% confident that, that we, that we have a fair market value for our assets. I think if there was any criticism, would be that we're getting more than fair market value. So, I mean, we have, as I've mentioned, we, VMG Health, who we retained on this, who you all retained, is really, to me, the premier, or on the short list, of premier healthcare valuation firms in the, in the country. And you all did not tell them, hey, this is the number we want, or this is the number we've negotiated. You just said, go find out, go tell us what fair market value is. And that's how, that's how we got the number. So it wasn't like they were biased or influenced. I mean, we feel like we came up with a really good, solid number. And I think if there would be any controversy about it, it would be, well, wow, 157 million? So I feel, I feel really good about that. And, and then with regard to the overall transaction, in terms of, you know, our conveyance of the 40 million, and, and the way the money basically has been allocated, I really, that's the value of bringing in a Kane Brothers, is that they, at the very end, after all said and done, after the deal's been put together, you bring in somebody independent, and they look at it, and they tell you, this is fair. And I think what, what they've said in their opinion is that this is, you know, it's, it's fair standing on its own, it's fair compared to other transactions they've seen in the marketplace. You can, you can, as a fiduciary, you can feel, you can feel 100% good that, you know, that the deal that you're, that you would approve today, you know, that you've protected the best interest of, of the community, because it's a fair, it's a fair transaction.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah.
Eric, probably for you. Maybe backed up by Jerry, I don't know. A lot of the calls, a lot of people that have been contacting me have been concerned about if we do this transaction, we'll lose any control over operations or any control over the hospital. Could you kind of go backtrack a little bit to our relationship with WMC currently, and how, how if we control their operations at all, or anything like that? Do we have control of their operations currently?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Millen, that's, that's a great question. And so the short answer is, is the county does not have any direct control on how the hospital is operated today. I think back in 1986, if you look at some of the history in the county, the county commission at the time decided, you know what, this healthcare is becoming too complex, and, and we really need to turn this over to an entity that focuses solely on, on the operations of a hospital. And so since that time, under the operating agreement, which was renewed in 1995, the county commission, even the Board of Trustees, have not really, there's no way for them to, to get into the day-to-day operations, what services are provided. That's, that's solely a function and a decision of Wyoming Medical Center right now. And, and I think in some sense, you can make the argument that under the proposed transaction, because of the commitments we've been able to negotiate with Banner to keep a 24/7 critical, you know, access hospital, trauma services, maternal and OB, OB services, that we're actually insuring a specific level of services that we couldn't even ensure today. I think under the current operating lease, you know, if WMC decided that Level 2 is too hard to maintain, because we haven't always been a Level 2, I don't believe, during the, the time of this lease, that would be a WMC decision. So, so I think that, you know, you could fairly argue that the commitments that Banner is making to the county and also to the foundation, we're ensuring for, in some cases, in perpetuity, and in some cases, for a long, definite period of time, a certain level of services. And I think that based on everything we've seen and heard from Banner, given they're, they're already present in the state, that they've got three other tertiary hospitals, that their, their strategic plan is, is to grow services, not to, not to see them dwindle.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Follow up with that, Eric. With our agreement and with their, where they've agreed to do the involuntary and different things like that, the commitments, we've actually have hooks built in for remediation if there isn't any, if we have a dispute over services, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So with regard to prisoner care and the care of involuntarily committed individuals, for a period of 10 years, Banner has committed to cover 100% of those costs. And, and I don't think it, it does bear mentioning, I think that right now, we pay WMC 120,000 a year for prisoner care. That goes away, and we won't have to pay that. After 10 years, they're going to pay the five-year average at the time of closing on into perpetuity. And if there is, if the costs rise above that, then actually, there's going to be a dollar-for-dollar match from the county and from the foundation to pay those, those costs. If for some reason, during the 10 years or thereafter, Banner would not fulfill those commitments, then there are, we would have the contractual ability to enforce those, those covenants. So, so, correct? In the post-operating agreement, there are contractual remedies.
Thank you.
Other questions? You know, the, yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Bertollio, one more.
One more, one more. I think it's been touched on in some of the public comments, why Banner? I think there's a sense out there that we only looked at one type of transaction and one entity. Could you go through all the other, other things we looked at? Just, I mean, it would, just, when we started this before you, we got you, they put a slide up that looked like a nuclear power plant schematic of all the different types of transactions. And we did look at a few of those. Could you elaborate on some of the things we looked at?
So, so Paul, on, on that, so the, the process that led up to us getting involved, the county, was all, was done by WMC, and they, and they came and told us how they had gone about doing that. And, and the process that they, that they went about, that I think that we all got, and I know I personally was comfortable that they'd done an adequate, had handled this process adequately, was they looked at all the potential nonprofit partners that, that would presumably be interested in this transaction, and, and had discussions or reached out to, to all of those. I think it's important that, and I, and I know that one of the things that was, that was appealing to, to a lot of people about the transaction, was that we were, was that the buyer was going to, is a nonprofit tax-exempt entity and not a for-profit company. You know, there are, there are some hospitals that are owned by for-profit companies, and I think one of the appealing things about, about this transaction is that Banner is a nonprofit, tax-exempt health system. And, and so with a, you know, with a duty under Internal Revenue Service Code and Wyoming law to provide indigent care. So that was a real strong, that was a real strong, I think, signal for why, why a nonprofit over a for-profit. And so, I mean, that was a key issue from day one. The transaction, in which you would call it, I mean, the technical term would be a membership substitution, is really the way, more often than not, these transactions are done. And so the way the transaction was structured was very typical of the way these are structured all over the country, and very typical, the ones that I've been involved in. So, so the way this ended up was, nothing unusual about it. Yeah, I think when you start out any transaction, you're thinking, well, we could do this A, we could do it B, we could do it C. So, you know, you always think about a lot of the ways to do it, but, but where they came out on it, where, where I thought they should come out on it, was the membership substitution. I mean, one of the advantages of that is, is that Wyoming Medical Center stays as a Wyoming nonprofit corporation, and there's something to be said for that. It's not going to, you know, it's not merged into Banner, it's not, you know, it, Wyoming Medical Center continues to exist, and I think there's something, you know, attractive about that, for, you know, for a lot of reasons.
I guess one of the, what I was trying to get to was, we did ask Banner to actually give us a different form of an offer on this, which I think was, was it the lease?
Oh, yes.
And then, and then we also looked at somebody actually coming in to actually just manage.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bertollio, that's correct. So this predates Jerry's involvement, but I think when, when, you know, WMC was going into this, there was no thought process at the time that it's, it's going to be a sale, or this is the exact type of transaction we're looking at. I think that it was, it was kind of wide open, like, and, and I think going through that very deliberative process, and, and the county had some, you know, knowledge and did some diligence around this, it just made the most sense, at the end of the day, to, to go down the trail of a membership substitution and a sale by the county of the assets. And I think one concern that, you know, I've heard, and you all probably have as well, is that by selling the assets, we're somehow, you know, losing some control. And I think that, you know, after consulting with, with Jerry and his team, I, you know, we don't believe that retaining ownership of the assets really made sense for the county. It didn't give us any additional ability to, to control operations or to, to ensure care. And, and we think that in the proposed transaction, with the post-closing covenants, that there's actually more ability. And this is often, I think, in the community juxtaposed against what's happened in our neighboring county, in Fremont County. And what I would stress, and to Jerry's point, it's, it's just apples and oranges, because that's a case where you had a for-profit hospital that came in, they didn't have those types of commitments that Banner has been willing to step up and provide, and they don't have the same requirements as a, as a nonprofit to provide indigent care. So, so it's, it's really, it would not, it's not a good comparable. And so, you know, we've, I think in this transaction, you know, taken super precautions to ensure that something like that doesn't happen, and we don't think that it will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Commissioner Millen.
Kind of follow up on that. Banner wasn't the sole entity that either approached WMC or WMC approached. There was others out there, as well as Banner gave multiple proposals to WMC. I believe there's an operational lease takeover, kind of like what we have currently with WMC, besides just this one option. Can you kind of run through that a little bit, as best you can?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Millen, so I think some of that is probably, you know, proprietary to WMC, but I will say that, yeah, there were numerous entities involved, numerous, you know, proposals involved. And I think that, you know, the WMC board took a lot of time to really scrutinize the offers, and, and I think as we've heard throughout this process, is trying to find a partner that, that fit from a cultural standpoint, that, that, that fits strategically in, in Casper, Wyoming. And again, to go back, they have three other hospitals in the state, they've had a longstanding presence. I think culturally, I think that the, the WMC board felt like that they were a really good fit in the way they operated. And so for those reasons, that I think was the, the choice of WMC. And then from the county standpoint, we had to get comfortable with that, and, and, you know, I think that I certainly have personally, and, and I think we've looked at a lot of, you know, facts and evidence around that. And then having been comfortable with Banner as the, the community partner, then how do we structure the transaction to preserve healthcare in this community? And, and I think we've done that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any from the trustees?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Well, I just, there has been some calls from people about the timing, and, and, you know, boy, it went quick. One of the problems is that during the period, we had a dark period, where everybody was looking at the books and making sure that it was a good fit. Banner was looking, so was Wyoming Medical Center. And so it was not in the press, although the deals were, like you said, over a year. And to make them the best that, that they could be, and, and it takes a while to, to negotiate those contracts. And then VMG's opinion on the, the evaluation, you know, I was really impressed when they got on, and they've literally done hundreds of these. They just, this isn't just a sideline business for them, it is their business. And, and so I think that was a, a real good deal, that, that we had them on board. So I'd like to thank Eric, you put in a lot of time, hundreds of hours might not get it done. It, you put in a lot of time, and Eric, I know that was your job, but you really went above and beyond. Thank you very much. And Jerry, thank you very much for coming up and representing us. We're glad to have you here. You've been in on several of these deals all over the country, and so it was important that you, have you here. And Tim Stubson is not in the room today, our other outside counsel, here in town and well-respected in the community, and he also helped us negotiate through this. So I'd like to thank Tim Stubson as well. So I guess we turn it over to the Board of Trustees, and, and they need to tell us if this deal makes sense.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there's no further questions. I would suggest we turn it over to the Board of Trustees.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. So we will go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees. We've already taken roll. I would like to entertain a motion to enter into Resolution 2020-36, approving the proposed sale of the hospital assets.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, I have a second, and I would just maybe add to that Resolution 2021-01. I don't know if that was, did you state that when?
No, I, no, I did not.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
I will second the motion to approve Resolution 2020-01.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just comments.
Okay.
I just would, I would be, I'm just impressed by the commitments that have been made by the county, to the county from Banner Health, and to Wyoming Medical Center from Banner Health. The capital investment, and then the commitments to remain an acute care facility in Casper for the indefinite future is quite impressive, and I think it's, it's a, be a positive thing for Wyoming, and allow Casper to remain, or become a medical center for the, for the entire state with a, like a spoken hub concept.
Thank you, Matt. Bill, any comments?
Briefly as, as well, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, is, I see this as a new chapter in the book of Neptuna County. And anytime you have a, any decision of that magnitude, there's risk and there's concern, that can't be avoided. And a lot of those concerns have been voiced, and with good reason. This, the healthcare system is truly one thing everybody in Neptuna County has in common. If you live here long enough, you're going to be involved in the healthcare system somewhere along the line. We've heard from staff how much time went into this decision to, you know, maybe, maybe another year, and you're right back in the same spot. There's no guarantee that, that dragging out any longer makes the decision any better or any easier. There was a lot of discussion about the fairness to the county of the transaction. And from my perspective, it's more important what the benefits are to the citizens in Neptuna County than it, than it is what the price is in regard to the fairness for, that the county is getting for their assets for the sale. And as Mr. Bell stated, times have changed, and we have to either stay with the time, or we have, or we get left behind. And in my opinion, this is the best way for us to ensure that the citizens in Neptuna County continue to receive top-notch healthcare. There's going to be services provided that aren't available now. And as such, I will be voting in favor of the resolution. And if I might, just to the members of the Commission, I have a flight here in just a few minutes, so whenever we approve this, you're going to, I'm not going to be leaving because I'm mad, I'm going to be leaving because I've got a flight to catch.
Okay. Yeah, I'm glad you pointed that out.
Thank you.
That's good. And as soon as you- That's good. And as soon as you guys vote, however it comes out, you can go.
Okay. All right. Well, I would make one final comment as well because we have talked a lot about the due diligence and the timeframe that we've been through, which has been quite a long timeframe. I personally went out and did my own due diligence and talked to family and friends in Colorado who have utilized Banner and just to get their feedback. And it was all positive. So it brings me great comfort knowing that as a community member here, that Banner is making that commitment to continue to keep the services and expand services and provide those services to all patients regardless of their ability to pay. So I'll just leave it at that. Any other comments? Okay. So we have a motion on the table in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Madam Chairman, a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the Board of Trustees, Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees.
So moved. I'll take that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Good luck, Bill. Thanks. Now it's up to us, I guess, huh? Okay. Well, we've heard lots of stuff this afternoon and any other final comments from our commission? Motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 2020-36.
Mr. Chair, I would second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve 2020-36. Any other comments? Yes, we'll start here. Mr. Commissioner Bertollio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had the pleasure, if you want to call it that, of being part of some very significant decisions in Neptona County, ranging anything from the AMICO reuse, I go down the whole list, but actually being part of making decisions that have impacts well beyond my lifetime. This is one of them. And I feel very strongly that it's the right decision to make. Some of you've heard my little statement about, I grew up in a medical family. My dad was a doctor. I went on house calls with him when I was young. Times have changed. The hospital I was born in is, I don't even know if it's even livable anymore. The hospital my dad worked in was a memorial county hospital. That now sits empty. It was a small community. It is, had a, it was a nonprofit. They did not elect to sell it. And it sits empty. That could very well happen here if we did not take the path we are on, which is actually selling the asset along with the operation. The asset is very expensive to maintain. With an aging population, we're going to see significant pressure on revenues. Having a large entity that can help absorb some of that, I think is only going to benefit Neptona County citizens. And a lot of people are saying the county's going to benefit and the foundation's going to benefit. I see Banner stepping in as a win-win for the citizens because they are committed to doing good quality medical services for Neptona County. You can see it within the agreement. The stuff that they put on the table, we didn't ask for it, they put it on the table, is something that gives me a great deal of sense of calm that they are not here to pillage Neptona County. They're here to serve. They want to be part of our community. My fellow commissioners around the state, those that have a Banner facility have nothing but glowing things to say about Banner and their commitment to their community. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Good. Commissioner Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to thank Eric and Jerry and everybody involved in this. You guys put a lot of work into it. Holy cow. But there are some concerns about our decision being made just prior to election. I don't think those concerns are valid. Each of us are up here and the decision has to be made whether we punt it for a week, a month, a year, or do it now. We were elected or appointed to be here now to make these decisions now. So we need to move forward. If the decision is to move forward this, that's the decision. And it needs to be made currently. We can't just kick the can down the road. So any thoughts of that? I don't see them as being valid. But I do see this agreement, this partnership almost with Banner. Nobody knows what the future's going to hold. Nobody. And as far as I can see through all the evidence presented, through looking at what's going on in the country, I've gone down to Colorado, talked, looked at, sniffed around down with the banners down there and with the commissioners down there, talked to people up here, know people that work for the Torrington Banner. It's, you know, there's a little bit of one-off here or there, but everything in general, 99% of it, they're very supportive and wish us best luck and want us to move forward as well. They think it'd be a good deal for this community. But with that said, I, looking at all the evidence, I'm probably going to support this.
Okay. Commissioner Chadwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Without rehashing what's already been said, you know, everybody does know, and if they don't know, they should know, Wyoming Medical Center did their due diligence, the county did their due diligence, Banner did their due diligence. Beyond that, what more can you say other than if I didn't believe that this action would enhance healthcare in Neptona County and Wyoming, I wouldn't be able to support it. And I am absolutely going to support this motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman?
So I brought six pages of notes so I could share with everyone how I feel.
Six pages?
Just kidding, Chairman, just kidding. But I did.
Yeah, man.
Yes.
Catch your flight.
Sorry, Mr. Knight. But I do, I do have a few comments. And I just want to say that up here, and I joked with some people who are close to me, this decision feels more grave than who you will marry in your life because this feels like it impacts everyone that lives in the community that I, that I adore and I support. And it is a long-term decision. So there's no, there's no divorce here. We're moving forwards. And that's a big deal to me. So please know, I don't think any of us have taken this decision lightly, myself included. I think when it became apparent that the county did have a role to play, it was, it was exciting about the opportunities and what this could mean. I think it was also very overwhelming because we have a long history with that institution and what it means to the people in our community. So the decision that we make here today will impact the landscape. Please know that I understand that and it's not anything that I take lightly. But I am in favor of this and I will be voting yes for a few key reasons. The first is to grow access to quality care. We all know people who have to leave the state for healthcare. And if that helps eliminate that, I am supportive. The capital investment that Banner is going to make to keep healthcare relevant and access able here in our community, I'm very committed to that. I also feel, and this was really neat, a higher up at Banner said this, he said, "We don't enter into agreements with people unless they're in a position of strength." So I'm very pleased that Wyoming Medical Center is where it is today. And I think that's why this deal looks like it does is because a lot of people have been stewards of our resources for a very long time and they've done a very good job. So thank you to that. And then also as someone who is really committed to driving our quality of life and retention and visitation, I feel like healthcare and what we are able to offer here really certainly does lend a quality of life in long-term. And this is a step in the right direction. So again, Mr. Chairman, I will, I am supportive of this. I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, you know, it brings up one thought I had about selling the buildings. People didn't think that we ought to sell assets. And realistically, that building's getting, part of it is getting pretty old. And if we had kept the same deal with an outside interest coming in, one of these days, they could have said, you know, we're going to build us a new, modern hospital somewhere out east or someplace in town if they stayed. And you can have your hospital back. What's the county going to do with that hospital? And so I have no problem with us selling that hospital to them. And I really do think that this is not going to do anything but it could help the healthcare of the citizens in Neptona County. And that's, that's why we're here. So anyway, I also am in favor of this. Everybody had to say that. So I guess I got to get my two cents in. So any other discussion? All those in favor of 2020-36, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. It is a done deal. Except there is a little problem with signing it today because it's the 13th. So I guess we're going to sign tomorrow. So there's no jinx on this thing at all whatsoever. It is Friday again tomorrow, but it's the 14th. So, well, thank you, everybody, for coming. I guess that's all we need to do, right, Eric? Okay. Thank you, board of trustees. Give our best to Carol when you talk to her. She might be watching on YouTube. Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming.